Ooh, are you good? Okay, we're about to start, child. At 6:00 PM, I am Mayor Yomika Robinson. I'm calling the meeting to order. A special city council, special city council meeting on tonight, Monday, June 17, 2024. I would ask all persons to please turn off or turn down your cellphone before the meeting begins. I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment... Excuse me. I pledged, I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of our city, of Lake City, South Carolina. The, we will not have an invocation. We would do a moment of silence again tonight. I'm asking everyone to please stand for the moment of silence. Today is the ninth anniversary for the nine people who were killed in the tragic killing in Charleston at the Emmanuel Church today, back in June 17, 2015. A moment of silence at this moment, and I'm going to ask Councilwoman Crosby to lead us in the pledge allegiance afterwards. Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, can you please poll the city council members?
Mayor Yomika Robinson?
Present.
Mayor Proton, Nicole Sematary?
Present.
Councilmember Willian Scott?
Present.
Councilmember William Askins?
Present.
Councilmember Dewanica Cooper?
Present.
Councilmember Sandra Fleming Crosby?
Present.
And Councilmember Jason Brown. Mayor Robinson, I find there to be a problem.
Thank you. I need a motion to adopt agenda as printed.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It has been properly moved and second. Any questions, counsel? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have public comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person, and no personal or verbal attacks will be entertained. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but speakers should not expect council action or deliberation on subject matters brought up during the public comment period. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the city administration and may be scheduled for a future agenda. When you come up to the podium, please sign your name and your contact info.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council persons.
Good evening.
I stand before you this evening because of concern that I have for the Lake City community and the budget for the 24, 25 year about whether or not you as mayor and city council will make sure that that budget is passed on this evening because I don't know you, whether you realize the devastation that could happen if the budget does not pass. Because when your fiscal year on year end, that means that you cannot operate, you can't go into your next year without a budget. So that means that people have to stop work, people cannot work, we cannot have security in the city, our policemen, and it, it will impact this community. When you ran for your office, you ran to for the city that you was gonna do the best for the city. But right about now, my heart is hurting because I don't think that you're doing the best for the city of Lake City. I've heard that it's about the mileage because you're thinking about the senior citizens, and they're on a fixed income. Well, if you look at your paycheck, everybody's on a fixed income. I don't care whether you work, you still get the same amount of money. But I am a senior citizen, and senior citizens are exempt. You don't have to pay as much taxes as anybody else, not unless you own other homes. If you, if you own a home that you're renting, yes, they're gonna have to pay the taxes. And I want to say to you that predominantly, we have a black council. Predominantly, Lake City is sixty-nine point so many, twenty-eight percent of black. You say you want the betterment for our city, but it's superior to me that you are against one another. I've come to city council meeting, and I've seen the disrespect that you had among one another. It's time for us to come together and grow. We cannot move forward. If you are divided, then the city are divided. So I come to you saying that the budget needs to be passed, but if it doesn't pass, then it's nobody fault but yours. The city, the citizen in this city will suffer because of the decision that you make. It shouldn't be that you're not passing the budget because of, I don't know what it is, why. But I know that we need to come together in Lake City. It's time for us to come together and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? If none, we're gonna move with our agenda to our legislative part. Mr. Hall, city administrator.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and council, for your consideration, I present to you ordinance number 2024.005, second and final reading, an ordinance for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, to levy taxes and establish a municipal budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025, and all matters related thereto. Mayor and council, on, in the backside of reading the ordinance, I would also like to share that we do hear the concerns of this proposed budget. If we do not pass this budget, then it's noted in our audits. The banks can call in all our loans, our insurance payments will be due, all payroll will be cut off, and we'll be downgraded on the credit rating. And that's just a few things that will affect the city if we are not able to pass a budget tonight. So I present to you ordinance number 2024.005, second and final reading.
I need a motion to approve ordinance 2024.005 for second and final reading.
Motion to approve.
Second. It has been properly moved and second. Any questions, counsel?
Yes, I have a question. And I want this to be on the record. I talked to William, and I talked to the mayor about this budget. I did not have a problem with the budget, but I talked to people in the city, the citizens here in Lake City, about the levy of taxes. Probably sixty to seventy-five percent of people I talked to was not happy about the levy of taxes. Understand that the city have to grow, and the citizens have to understand that it have to grow. But at this point in time, I don't think our citizens will be able to handle a extra tax to them. So I'm gonna go with how my constituents feel, and the other ones that wanna go how their constituents feel, feel, feel free to do that, just remember whenever you go back to the ballot box. That's all I got to say.
I'm recusing myself because I find there to be a conflict of interest, and I cannot see an additional tax burden on anyone, because I'm not gonna vote to increase my taxes. Therefore, I'm not gonna vote to increase anyone else's taxes. And to say that everyone is on a fixed income, to an extent we are, but our income levels are totally different. You know, some may be getting five, six hundred dollars a month, others may be getting two or three thousand a month. So there's a span there, so that it's gonna impact those really true fixed income thing. Yes, they do have income, but that income will not support a levy.
I also have something to say. I'm speaking on behalf of my constituents as well. If anyone knows District Four, District Four predominantly is black, which doesn't have anything to do with it, but it is also privatized as well. There, we, I have three housing developments, which they probably do pay some type of tax, but it probably won't be the tax that has to do with what's going on. But I'm taking everybody into, into consideration because everybody matters. And I'm thinking, like I said, I'm thinking about them right now, you know. If, whenever I look at the budget, when I see certain things, you know, at spending ninety thousand dollars for certain things a year, okay, what can we do to actually decrease the spending amount in the city so that it wouldn't be so much for the citizens? So I think it starts at the top first. So we are the top. So what can we do to stop so much spending in the city and then help still be able to not levy the taxes right now? I understand that, yes, it takes the city, I mean, it takes, you know, money and a budget, of course, to operate the city, but if this city, if this budget is not passed, you guys will just go back to the next budget, right? Or just go, discontinue with this budget, so it's not, no? No? Okay. No, you won't. It won't be nothing. Okay, but that's still fine. So, so will the employees still be paid?
We end on June 30, 2024. The essential staff will be in place, City Hall will have to shut down, and the employees would be paid. I'd have to check into the fire and the police, I'm not sure how that runs. Charlie? They would have to wait, they would have to work unpaid until we come back.
Charlie, can you put your mic up?
You got it behind you.
Without a budget passed by July 1, the city would not have the ability to expend funds. And so, no, the large swath of employees would not get paid.
Well, still, I'm still looking at what my consent, how my, my district is, and what's the, what could be the possible outcome for them, because, yes, I can echo with, with, with what Ms. Murphy just said, or, excuse me, Ms. Crosby just said, that, yes, everybody's on a fixed income, and it could be five hundred dollars, or six hundred dollars, or it could be three thousand dollars a month. And then you have to think, too, if you go up on a tax, how many senior citizens their insurance goes up to? So now, if you own your home, your insurance is going up, and your, what are the type of insurance, you know, everything is going up. So what will they have? So I'm taking all of this in consideration for my constituents and how I see my demographics is in my, in my actual district. And so, that's what I see.
And otherwise, anyway, it's gonna pass anyway, 'cause that's why we didn't do it the other night anyway, so.
Well, I have one of the largest districts, and I think behind me is council member, Mayor Proton. And it's predominantly black, and mostly...
Huh? Is it the whole city?
Pardon?
The entire city is predominantly black.
Oh, yeah, but I'm speaking of, well, the entire city, but when I'm looking at demographics in my district, it's one hundred percent black. And a lot of these people are homeowners, they're elderly, they're already having problems. I can give you ten people right now who are living on this fixed income, and they cannot enjoy some of the simple pleasures in life that they should be able to, that they've worked hard for. And again, I think it's not fair to put that unnecessary financial burden on them. And, because there should be other alternatives available. And I'm not, she's not against passing the budget, but...
Not against.
Yeah, I'm totally not against it.
Not against.
Not against the budget, but maybe the taxes. And then when you look around throughout the year, where are these funds coming from? For example, you may have a piece of equipment that needs, what was that piece of equipment we had to repair, spending seventy or ninety thousand dollars?
Seventy-two thousand dollars.
Seventy-three thousand dollars.
A bulldozer.
Okay.
Or, excuse me, an excavator.
Okay. When you look at situations like that, you know, you can find the money when you wanna find it, but when you don't wanna find it, there is, you know, the burden is placed on council to decide to or not decide to. And just being realistic about the entire situation, I'm not for levying taxes on anyone.
And everyone goes, so, I don't think, this day and time, everybody's struggling, and I don't wanna see our citizens struggling.
I don't want, I don't want to, just real quickly, I don't want to get the mess, I don't want the message to get twisted. I don't think any of us up here wants to see a burden on anyone, myself, citizens in District 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, or 6, in the entire city of Lake City. But we have to, and it's not, it, it's never to what you stated, where we want to find the money, then we find it, where we don't, we don't. No, we're always looking into better ways for our community.
But you still have to...
And at the, and at the betterment of every citizen of Lake City. When we look at this budget and military, we were suggested by the state, the Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office, and not only the city of Lake City municipality, but throughout the entire state of South Carolina. And this was suggested, we have not done this in how many years?
We didn't do it last year. We did a decrease the year before that, so really, this will be two years skipping. A decrease two years ago, nothing last year, and this year, based on the auditors and the state, well, even the state sent another letter saying they gave us another four point one two, which would bring the whole ordeal up to twelve point one two increase if we, that's what our line was. Based on our, our history and based on what the state's evaluation of us is.
So if we don't start to do things that needs to be done, and we're looking at every situation, we know that Lake City is predominantly black, but that doesn't mean just because you're black, you can't handle certain things.
Well, I didn't, I wasn't saying...
I know, I'm not saying that you spoke those exact words, but I'm speaking that.
Yeah, 'cause over there, my district, I got a big district, too.
You have the biggest district.
And I got, I got Caucasian people in my district, and I get along with, with them well, and I have talked with them, too, and they feel the same way.
Yes. Well, for us to be able to move forward...
How many positions do we have?
This budget covers one hundred and thirty-four positions.
Before we get, we get off of that, Mr. Hall, when we went up on the water, okay, what I'm talking about, when we went up on the water bill, you remember when we first got on cable?
Last year.
We was gonna, we did the levy of tax, we was gonna do it then, but we decided, don't levy the taxes, this go around, we go up on the water bill, you remember that?
Yes, because, and we even dealt with the levy, with the increase on the water and sewer bill, that still leaves us the second lowest in the state of South Carolina.
We still low. We're still not at where we need to be.
And, and one, I'm gonna share that we have, we have, we do good with the funds that we've coming in, that are coming in, and we handle them appropriately, because if we have, if we do not, we would not have been able to pay the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar repair work on Highway 52 when we had to close it down. We wouldn't be able to repair over here on Church Street, a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Charles Street.
Because, Charles Street, and that street's collapsed. And now we're waiting for the, the gas company to do their work so we could finish our work. The property, the problem we had on Carver Street, that came in at seventy thousand dollars. Those type things, we paid out of the money we have in the bank, and we had it. Thank the Lord we did, if not, then we would be scrambling, asking the state for money to cover our bills. And then there's other things that we have going on that we haven't addressed yet, but as they come up, as we know, we have an aging infrastructure in water, sewer, and our stormwater.
Every time you turn around, you got, there's a water line breaking. Mr. Ricky and his crew is out there every week, and I'm pretty sure everybody sees it throughout the city, on this corner and that corner.
Now, that is pretty common, that's why you have that department there, you're gonna have that, because it's man-made, God didn't make it, so you're gonna have break-in, I meant, uh, uh...
Line maintenance.
Wait a second.
Line maintenance.
Line maintenance. And when you look around, we only have two grocery stores here. No businesses, no industry. And with us being the lowest in the state, there needs to be some kind of dichotomy there where we need to get more businesses in.
And this right here will help.
Uh, well, until we get the man, we can't do anything. They need to be here, and they need to be able to work, because it's the people, some of the people are working.
Work out of town, bring the money back to the city.
Now, I'd like to say something. I meet all those requirements. I'm old, I'm black, and I'm poor, but yet, I know the city must go on. I, I know that it's, it's a way maker somewhere that gonna make it possible for us to do it, because everybody, nobody wanna increase in nothing. But in order for us to move forward, I, I believe, and I vote, I will vote for it, to continue. Let's don't shut the city down, because if you go right, I tell you, everybody can say, no, I don't wanna increase from the richest to the poor, we're saying, and then we, that's actually people who cannot afford it no more. But then, that's a way maker, go out there and find the resource wherever it's gonna take. Now, I say, I meet all the requirements, I'm a winner, I'm poor, I'm black, I ain't got nothing, but I do have common sense, I know what it take to move forward. Let's don't let the city fold because of the people that say to you, we, we are in a circuit, you ain't, you know, everybody in the whole city has said that, but I know the majority, a lot of people can say, and they, we, this is a black city, consider it, almost like seventy, ninety percent, so we have to move it on. We can't let it fold because this won't happen. You know, I was hurt, and I heard about not being able to vote for the bat, the, the recreational to get our uniform, you know? I, 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 I had to pick up some bodies to try to help them to move forward. We cannot, we got to think beyond what our mindset, you know, we got to go forward, we can't let it fall, anybody who black on here, anybody who rich, anybody who poor, but it's the need of all of us here, it's the need of the city, let's let it grow. That don't go with majesty, everybody, we not a team, you know? We got to play this thing together, all us together, what's gonna make a difference? Divided, we will fall, but together, we can make a difference.
Yes, we can.
That's me. Like I say, my vote is yes. I don't want it, I see, I got, I be all the criteria we all talk about, I got them all, and I guarantee you, come out, you can prove it, I'm living on fixed income, that everybody has, I'm a winner, everything, but God made a way for me, I'm able to pick my bills, I can buy food, I'm not stupid, huh? So that's, you know, I'd say, we can't satisfy everybody, we'll never satisfy all, you know, everybody, somebody got overcome, you say, why y'all, this came with me, why rain? God, I ain't got the control of the rain, my car got flooded out, my house got flooded out, mine did too, but then, that was God, it wasn't me. So, you know, these things, something we cannot prevent, so not, don't make an argument out of things that we can't have the control over, let's try to move forward, and then see what we can do to help and, and make it grow, not, not divide it, let's, let's grow, let's think about the growth. I mean, I've got Lake City for the last twelve years, and saw the growth in Lake City, I don't want anything to distract that and stop the growth here. Let it, let it grow, let it go, something will come. If more here now than was twelve years ago, four years ago, I'm a living witness, I've been in Lake City forty years, so I saw the difference, I know the difference. So let's don't go backwards, and then every time you have a budget, we not gonna vote on it. That's me.
For the record, I want it excluded from the black and white thing, I wasn't raised like that, and don't make it a race thing.
And I didn't, and I did not make it a race thing. Only thing I said, no, I'm just saying, no, because I know that kind of, I heard the remark, I heard the remark, but no, it wasn't, I'm just saying how my, the demographics, and it is what it is, and it's for the record, on record, that's what it is over there in District 4.
And I get old, mine is, is not a race issue, issue, but mine is predominantly black. And another thing, I think it's not fair...
It's gonna be the last comment.
To put out alarming information that the city was shut down because it was not passed, I think that is negative, and that is something to...
But it's true.
That is something to...
It's true. It's true.
It's something to upset people, I don't think there's any truth to that.
Your lawyer's sitting right there, your attorney's sitting right there and stating that it's true.
Just because the attorney said that, it's supposed to be true?
What other, I mean, yes. We have an attorney for a reason.
Just, just for clarity's sake, we've met with the Municipal Association and their executive director, who's also a lawyer, and have affirmed these general issues.
I, I would like to add that, based on the comments that were made about bringing industry back to the city, we are working very diligently to do that. It takes a lot of conversation and a lot of, a lot of talk, and people coming and putting their feet on the ground, i.e. meaning McLeod, their first stage of their building is gonna be a sixteen-bed doctor's office, and then they're gonna go in the emergency center, and then they have three more sections of that expansion they're going to do there, which will be beneficial since we lost Lake City Community Hospital.
And it's not only on one, one pair of shoulders, it's not only on two pairs of shoulders.
We have so many people working on these projects.
Yes, so many different people, including everyone up here, can be having conversations as well. The different conferences that we attend, there's different vendors there, and you have the same conversations that I'm having, even though I have the title of mayor, you can still have the same conversations I'm having.
A strip center's in, in the conversation, a new hotel's in the conversation, housing in the conversation. And for example, we had a conversation today regarding housing, and if we start in six months, it would be 2025, late, before they would start breaking ground to build, to build the houses.
And you will be getting a notification from Madam Clerk next week about that meeting coming up for a council.
To talk about housing. So we hear you, and it's not that we're not trying to do what needs to be done to better the tax base, so if we get a larger tax base, that means it would go away with the tax rate, because the more tax dollar base you have, the less your tax rate's gonna have to be. But our tax base at this moment has been stale for so many years, and we're trying to make it turn around and increase. And a good thing is the businesses we have that we've annexed into the city on 52, and Dunkin' Donuts, Baskin Robbins, and hopefully that the Chicken House closed, project went south, but we're still working to try to get someone to go into, to that building. So it's not we're sitting doing nothing, but we do have a lot of conversations, and we're trying to entice our business partners to come to the city of Lake City.
And all good things take time. It takes time.
I totally understand that, and thank you, William, for, for what you were saying. Everybody is not a nurse, everybody is not a phobotomist. Thank God, McLeod is in the works of coming, and we are grateful for that. But you have to look at the demographics and see what type of people you have, you know, in Lake City.
That's why we have a bid.
Of course, encourage them to, to, to go to school and, and become those doctors, lawyers, and phobotomists, and all those great things, to, to feel the positions that we do have coming. But there has to be something else, and it has to pay money for, to pay for these, the housing, and what, matter of fact, and how is the housing going on on...
We're coming to the closing table, it's not on us, it's on the buyer.
So how many, how many houses are, are aboard?
The other two, we're coming, should be online at the end of July.
Okay, so all three of them?
All, all three of them are, one closed, fell through, that's on the buyer.
Okay.
And we can't talk about it, because it's, it's private, but we have, we have more people in line asking about it.
Yeah, I totally, okay, thank you for that. But yeah, so back to, to that, it's like, you just have to look at the demographics, get somebody that's gonna come in and actually be able to pay the people here so that they can stay here and not go to Florence, I go to King Street, and I go to Sumter, and Murder Beach, and stuff like that, just to make a dollar, and just spend half of their check, going back and forth and work, that's the only thing I'm saying.
The businesses, we, we don't go out and just picking businesses to come... The businesses, we, we don't go out and just picking businesses to come. These businesses, they look, they look at your city and see what your city can offer them. They wanna make sure that they get that, that right infrastructure. So we got to be proactive and make sure that we have the right infrastructure for them. Because those are things that they're looking for.
Well, I mean, I'm not, I'm not downplaying the fast food restaurants and anything like that. That's perfectly fine.
It gotta pay.
But.
Well, let me throw out, let me throw this one out here. The battery place right there on Wilson Road that they'll be opening in Florence.
Job, every job.
It started, the P, our PDRTA has a route that comes from here that will be going there during the peak time so they can get to work on time. And when they get off work, they can get back home. And they've increased their, their, their time of run to accommodate that. So they can take people from Lake City and get them over to the college, uh, the, the college at Francis Florence Burlington Tech. And so they can take that training, they can learn that trade, so they could go to work at that battery shop. So those steps are already in place for this battery shop to employ some of the people in Lake City.
Okay, I think we, um, everybody knows what they're, what they're saying. So it has to go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth.
Just wanna go ahead and make sure everybody gets, say what they need to say. You think? Any more comments, council members? If none, all in favor of ordinance two zero two four point zero zero five for second and final reading of our budget for fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five? All in favor, show of hands. All opposed? Thank you. Motion, ordinance has passed.
Mayor and council, for your consideration, resolution number twenty twenty-four point oh three two, final reading. Mayor and council, to accept the bids for the All-Star Sports Incorporated for the Lake City Recreation and Tourism Department baseball softball uniforms in the amount of nine thousand three eighty-eight ninety-one and all matters related thereto.
This is a new resolution number? One second, one second. I need a motion to approve resolution two zero two four point zero three two for final reading.
Motion to approve.
Second. It has been properly moved as second. Any questions, council?
You said different.
I got a question.
Different number of the resolution? Why, why is it different?
Because we can't bring back the same.
So would this be?
Any questions?
How do we come up with the nine thousand dollars? Do the city, do the city fund that money?
The way, the way this, this, we, we, we pay the bill. But Cynthia is getting donations and sponsorship money. It may not pay the whole bill. But we know that we have X amount of people that's gonna be in this program. We know what their sizes are. We submit that out to numerous, uh, vendors and they send us back their costs. We don't contact them by law, we can't. We take an apple to apple, everything is the same. They look at it on face value.
Put this back on the record for everyone in the city. I did clear, understood how this money was, um, given to the Recreation Department. Now I got a clear understanding how the money was given to the Recreation Department. Because I was thinking that the city was over this money. And I, and the question was asked, did we go with a cheaper bid? Could we file a cheaper bid then or get a, a company to go cheaper? If I known that was the case, I would've went along with it. Because at the end, they made Cynthia get out and she beat the bushes to get this money. So I'm never gonna hold any kids back. My thing was, I didn't understand if the city just did, do, do diligence by going out and doing, getting a second bid. Another quote, that was a little bit cheaper around that quote to get the kids the uniform. So before we go out saying that we're not gonna do anything for the kids, let's come to our council and ask why we did what we did. And that's it for me.
Well, when we do these still bids, we can't entertain and go back and forth with the, with the conference.
It's cleared up now, it's good.
And he only got his two bids then?
Yeah, he only got his two bids. So whenever you put up the bids for, on the procure, on the procurement website, then whoever wants.
They get to bid on it.
Right.
Yes. But they have to be apples to apples. We can't go back and say this, that, and what.
And that's what you explained. That's what you explained last week as well. And when I asked the question, when I asked the question last week, that's what you explained, that you can't go back and forth.
Right.
So I echo with Jason as well. It's not, it wasn't about that. It was about us, how much money was the city spending?
Was the city spending, the city money. Was the city spending, the city money? That was the question being asked. And that question was not asked. Was not asked, not asked. Was not asked.
Or explain.
Was it, what is explained? Was it explained? But you, you, you cleared it up and now we all on the same page.
Thank you.
All that's good to go. And it's, it's not your fault, but all.
No, thank you.
All is with it.
We think that only with seven thousand something, he explained that it's sizes?
They could not furnish the sizes needed to fulfill the obligations to the children.
It's all good.
Thank you.
And my answer is yes for that. But go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Any other comments, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands? Thank you.
Uh, Mayor and Council, that's all I have. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Now it's time for council member and mayor reports and comments. We'll start with Askins.
Looking to report.
First things first, thank you all for coming out this evening. I just really wanna say, just sitting up here, listening at everyone's concerns. I definitely have to agree with Ms. Paula Morris. We are divided. I mean, I just, that's just, that's just that, we're divided. The citizens are looking at us. We are leaders. Y'all put us up here. But we are not setting the example at all. Hopefully, one day we could come together and do better, um, for the betterment of the city. But right now, we, we are not doing what we supposed to do for you guys. Um, I apologize on my behalf, but, um, at the end of the day, I just really hope that, um, we can figure something out and move forward. But thank you all.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming out. And, um, none of us will always, you're not gonna think alike. Everybody's entitled to his, her own, her, his or her own opinion. And to try to, um, uh, emasculate a person for believing in their own conviction is not fair. Because when you look at the world, there's chaos all over. And people are gonna operate according to their perception and their own conviction. And as far as being divided, if it's something right, I'm going along with it. If I'm not comfortable with it, I'm not going along with it. And, um, so if you wanna talk with me about it, I'm open at any time. But do not sit back and criticize. Because it's so easy to sit back and find fault and point the paper, finger. And it would be nice if we could have conversations, get an understanding of what's going on. Because I'm glad you all are here, but there's a lot that goes on that you're not quite aware of. And just for education and awareness, awareness. If you, awareness, if you wanna know something, if I can give you the answer, I will. But if I can't, I'm gonna tell you where you can go get it. So let's just kinda think outside the box. Just kinda get out of that, uh, bubble. And respect a person's opinion, whether or not it's your opinion. Just show respect and such and such. And also, um, I had my fish fry Saturday and I went in all of those to paint. We had a wonderful time. Um, it was hot, but we had a lot of people come through. And I, I should say, I'm happy to say that it was a, for Lake City, it was a massive success. And I wanna thank, um, council member Cola. You know, she, um, paid her, um, respects and came out for a few minutes. And, um, everybody had a wonderful time, got so many comments. And, you know, but the easiest thing is to be negative. But let's sometimes, just try to, even myself, let's be more positive. And I wanna thank, um, Patrick Miles for coming out. He came out and, um, spoke to the people and sat there for at least, you were there what, about an hour and a half or so? Almost two hours. And, um, I think the community, you know, the community has a perception. And I think with him hanging around and talking to them collectively and individually, it made a positive impact. And I wanna thank you for that. And if you wanna get up and say a few words as to what you experienced in talking to the people? Because it did explain to them we're gonna do, um, um, community crime watch meetings.
I enjoyed it. Thank everyone for coming out. I think it's something that should take place more often than it does within each respective district. That's the only way these crime watch meetings are gonna work. For everybody to do their part, participate in them. So again, thank everybody for turning out. I will be there so long as they happen. I plan to attend every one of them each and every time.
Okay, um, can you kinda shed highlight on some of the things that, you know, people have been showing out? If you feel it was, it's necessary? I mean, people had him surrounded, but it was in such a good, positive way. And, um, you know, we ain't gonna spend a lot of time doing it, but, you know, some of the things that may have caught your attention that you feel may need to be addressed. But now one thing is, you know, they were happy to see your face out there because a lot of people don't know who you are. And they want to see more presence from the chief.
One of the, one of the biggest things that I noticed was that most of the people, it doesn't matter who the police officer is, whether it's me or whether it's a patrol officer, they just wanna see the police. And I think those crime watch meetings is a way to definitely make that happen. Because not only will we be at those meetings, during those meetings, we will be, our plan is to establish a board for each district for being a crime watch committee. The members of that board will have direct access to myself as well as the other officers. They'll get our phone numbers. They'll, they'll become, they'll get to know us on a first-name basis quite quickly. And I think that was the biggest thing. The concern was that the community wanted to see more of the police, didn't matter who the police was. It's just they wanted to see more of them. And they, they were glad for what they had to see.
I was really shocked, you know, that you stayed up there that long. And they, they were really happy that you were there, really.
Look, if the citizens were sweating, I'm sweating too.
I know. It did get real hot, but, um, they stuck it out. We had a lot of people come and get their fish and, you know, drive off, but a lot of them hung around. So it was nice.
That's good. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks again for coming out. Um, every, everyone's, um, voice and concerns is greatly appreciated and are heard. Um, even though we may go back and forth with each other, at the end of the day, I think everyone, we want the best for Lake City. And I think everyone wants the best for their districts. And I, like Ms. Murphy said, we just trying to do what's best for our districts and that's it. I want to thank Chief Miles. Because Chief Miles and also Major Graham, because there was a shooting in my district. And Friday, when I got from work, the first place I came to was to the police department. Because I said, I gotta check on my people and make sure that they're okay and that they are made sure, and make sure that they are kept safe. Uh, Major Graham told me, you know, gave me a brief overview of what happened. I asked, hey, are y'all gonna beef, you know, toughen up or beefing up the, uh, police presence? He told me yes. And when I tell you, and then I think probably like thirty minutes later, I saw a news flash on Facebook saying, hey, it's happening now, so be on the lookout. So I would like to thank you and your staff for making sure not only that District Four was, um, yeah, policed, um, that there was patrolling all through there. Because I seen, matter of fact, Sunday morning, I seen three people pass on my house, three cops pass on my house. I said, okay, Lake City. And that, so that really touched my heart because we need, not only in District Four, but everywhere. I just don't want it to be a District Four thing, but that's where the shooting, well, that's where one of the shootings happened, excuse me. But, um, and then my constant went, like, I just hope that Lake City can come together and stop this gun violence for nothing. Y'all? Be going back to this black thing, because this is where it's at. Black men, y'all got two choices. You either gonna shoot each other and kill them, and kill, or you're gonna be in jail. And that's what it's looking like. Y'all gotta quit because it doesn't make any sense. That lady house was all shot up. Y'all can't even shoot. Because when you shoot, it's a breathing technique. Y'all could, could have shot anybody on Scott Street. I mean, just shoot them up. It is ridiculous. I will also, I'm sorry, y'all, but that, that, because, because that was, that was, that was a lot. And just to see someone just scared for their, for their lives. Because you don't know where the bullet is gonna, gonna hit. I mean, y'all gotta quit. Please stop. I mean, if you don't do anything else, think about your mom, your grandma, your sister, your brother that could have been in that house and y'all shooting stuff up for no reason at all. It doesn't make any sense. It no, it won't stop today, it won't stop tomorrow. But it needs to stop. Just like we need to come together. Y'all need to come together too. Everybody needs to come together as a collective. And this is the truth. Everybody's gonna have their ups and downs. Like, everybody is gonna think the same way. But let's think safety. Let's care more about each other.
We're not preaching to a, to, to, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Um, let's go back to fighting physically.
No, let's not. Okay, okay, so I'm off of that. But I just want y'all to just take that in consideration again, Chief Miles and, um, Major Graham. I really appreciate y'all. I appreciate the, um, whole police force for making sure that the, not only District Four, but the entire, um, Lake City was kept safe. I, I, I just hope that you guys keep up the good work. Just don't do it when there's a shooting, but keep it going, like, you know, daily, on a daily basis. Um, and the other thing, I would like to thank the city, along with the Fahyung Temple on number two sixty-six for an eventful weekend for June tenth. Um, I hope that it will grow some more and, um, we will be able to not only just have a brunch or have entertainment, but actually educate, so bring in speakers and different type of vendors and things like that, so that it can be a bigger event. I know that, I think this is the second one. So like going for, I'm sure that it'll get bigger. So I think that, like I said, it was, it was a great, um, it was a great turnout. Um, the parade was nice. The brunch is nice. And, um, some of the other events, um, that I went to, um, that evening was, um, nice as well. So just keep up the good work. Let's come together. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight for council meeting. I hear that we say, I hear the saying that we divided. But when you doing right by people, you need to have your blinders off. You need to see both, both ends of everything and, and every light. I don't wanna be that, that mirror walking through town, carrying everybody groceries home and not seeing what's on, on both sides of Main Street when I'm gone. I wanna be that good mirror where I see everything that my host surrounding. I just don't wanna be a puppet for anyone. I wanna, I wanna be here for the citizens of Lake City, where I've been born and raised. I get mixed emotions about different things like this. And if we don't do right by our people that we have to live beside every day and not treat our fellow brother right, it just don't sit well with me. So other than that, the weekend was good, June tenth was good. All of that was good. Like, see y'all at next council meeting.
Thank you, council members, for your reports. I thank the citizens of Lake City who are here in person for being here tonight. I thank the ones who are streaming and, and watching on Facebook Live and any other social media platform. Just wanna say, as your mayor, I took the oath and we all took the oath that we were due disposition to the best of our ability. And that's what we definitely need to stand on. I agree with a lot of things that was said up here, that yes, we have been disconnected. We have been showing it. And we have been doing. And we have been doing, trying to do our best to not show it, because it is okay to agree and disagree. It is fine, we're not gonna have the same ideas, we're not gonna have, we're not gonna agree on everything, and that's okay. But we do have to come together better than what we are and what we have been. We have to trust the people we have in position, such as our city administrator, Mr. Hall, such as our Madam Clerk, such as your mayor. We have to trust them and to believe that they are doing what they are doing every single day for the betterment of this city to grow. And for each and every citizen, no, you're not going to please everybody, there's no way I'm going to even try to run down myself to please everybody. I know I can, and I'm not gonna try to, but I do ask for respect. I ask for respect in my position, I ask my, I ask for respect as a human being, because that's what, that's what we need to do. This shirt right here says, "Love your neighbor." And it came from Mr. Chris Singleton, his mother was one of the victims. And the anniversary today of the ninth year of the Manure Church victims. Love thy neighbor. We need to love more and hate less. We need to understand more so we can get farther in our city and do more for our city, cause our city is growing, our city is a beautiful city. And we are working every day diligently, having those conversations, having those meetings after meetings after meetings. We don't have anything to hide, we're not hiding anything. And we're doing it for the black, we doing it for the white, we doing it for the Hispanic, we doing it for the dog and the cat. Everybody, to make sure that they love to live in Lake City, and they want to, even, if they're not living in Lake City now, they want to move to Lake City. So we're doing everything possible, and I encourage the council members, when I send an email out or a text and ask you to please come and speak with me, or any of the city officials that work it on a daily basis, so we can get the understanding and won't have the back and forth in the meeting. Please come, so we can have all of that cleared. But if we don't, we gonna continue to have the back and forth. Get our personal feelings out of the way, because it's not about I, it's about the citizens of Lake City. It's not about how you feel about me, it's not how we feel about each other, it's about, at the end of the day, it's about our youth in the recreation department, it's about our seniors at the senior center, it's about everyone. It's about each district, no matter what. I live in District Four, and I appreciate your representation, Councilwoman, um, Cooper. Cause I live there, and I know that you inform, people tell me, and I appreciate. But we have to come better, together better than what we are. They're seeing it every day, people are on Facebook Live, not to be informed, they're, they're coming on Facebook Live to get a comedy show. Cause that's what it's been lately. So it starts with us. It starts with us. Businesses don't come because they see the comic that goes on, they see the foolishness, they see the childishness. And that's the reason why maybe another grocery store don't wanna come, they don't wanna deal with it. So it begins up here. So we have to get ourselves together if we wanna see this change. What, what's the statement? Be the change you wanna see. Be the change you wanna see. So I thank everybody for coming out, I appreciate you to the fullest, and we're gonna get this thing together. Cause we got a lot of growing to do. I need a motion to adjourn? Thank you.